I'd like to call this meeting Chillicothe City Council to order. We'll call Mr. Clark.
Trutzel, here. Tattman, here. Showman, here. Pearl, here. Patrick, here. Neal, here. Gray, here. Bonner, here. Ames, here.
Okay, I'd like to ask your committee to rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, your journal minutes were provided to you both electronically and papers this weekend by our esteemed clerk. Were the minutes everybody's favor, Mr. Bonner?
I have a motion to accept the minutes.
Second, Ms. Gray. We'll call to accept the minutes.
Trutzel, yes. Tattman, yes. Showman, yes. Pearl, yes. Patrick, yes. Neal, yes. Gray, yes. Bonner, yes. Ames, yes.
The minutes are accepted. Reports of committees. Ms. Patrick?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. The Utilities Committee has one item on tonight's agenda. It's item number six. It is the first reading of an ordinance accepting an easement from Greg and Robin Robinson. And this easement is needed to finish the Adena water line upgrade project. The easement allows the city to loop existing water line in Clayburn with the new lines we put in over the tank. Looping this line will result in better water pressure and prevent the water from becoming stagnant. There is no cost to the city for this easement. And as I said at our last meeting, at the appropriate time, I will ask that we waive the three-read rule so the work can be finished as soon as possible. It will take about a week to do the work once they get the go-ahead. I would also like to report on Utility Committee assignment number fourteen dash zero five, which was requested by legislation updating the city's sewer use ordinance. The draft update has been finished, and a meeting to review the proposed changes will occur the first week of February. So hopefully by the end of February, we'll have that in front of us. And reporting to the Special Counsel Committee, assignment number fourteen dash twenty-four, addressing the clandestine drug issue, I'm very pleased to report that this legislation is wrapping up at the Law Director's office. I expect that legislation to be on our February agenda, and I again want to thank Mrs. Ames, Ms. Gray, and Mr. Pearl for a job well done, and I appreciate their hard work on this. When the legislation is finally put on the council's agenda, I will schedule a review session so we can explain it to the rest of the council in public and answer any questions who may have. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Patrick. Any other reports of committees? Mrs. Ames?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. Development has two items on the agenda tonight. Item four is the first reading of an ordinance to create Chapter 1168 of the codified ordinances establishing the Chillicothe Downtown Development Commission. A development committee meeting was held on January 7th, 2014, with all council members present. I gave a brief background, and then Mayor Everson gave a PowerPoint presentation on the OSU master's class study project of the Historic Design Review District, the establishment of the Downtown Development Committee, and the request to establish a permanent Downtown Development Commission. Following the presentation was a working meeting on this ordinance, and I would like to thank Law Director Rutherford and Office Manager Teresa Wood for all of the work on this ordinance. At the Development Committee meeting, we discussed some changes to be made, taking out the treasurer position, meeting minutes being sent in council district boundaries. Several suggestions were made as to what area to be addressed. I revisited the original draft and study. It addressed the area known as the Historic Design Review District. The Downtown Development Committee also addressed this HDR District. The Planning and Zoning Update Committee, of which Mrs. Patrick, Mr. Pearl, and I were members, spent eighteen months updating the zoning codes. Mr. Lauren Meade, a surveyor, set out the HDR District in both technical terms and layman's terms as listed in ordinance 1167.03B. One of the pledges of the Downtown Development Commission is not to infringe on the roles of the other established commissions, so I retained 116804 Downtown District Boundary as set forth in 116703B. This does not mean that the commission will not seek to enhance areas outside this district, but their focus will remain on the HDR District as originally planned and in the ordinances. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Trutzel.
Thank you, President Reinhardt. The Finance Committee has one item on tonight's agenda. It's the first reading of an ordinance appropriating $352,574.97 to continue the handling of brought-forward purchase orders from 2013 to be spent during 2014, and I expect and request Auditor Feeney to report on this. Also, I have a request for the purchase of two garbage trucks that I have submitted to the Law Director's office, and I expect to see that on the agenda on our next council session. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trutzel. Ms. Feeney?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. Development has two items on the agenda. I've reported item four. Item five is the first reading of the ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with a water age drain company. This is an annual request in regard to updating all of our codified ordinances. Exhibit A lists all of the duties they perform for the city. Because this is an annual expense and budgeted for, at the appropriate time, I will ask to waive the three-read rule and pass this tonight. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Feeney. And a note on that, the sooner that is passed and agreed and all of that, or sooner that work gets done, and we can update our own books and the packages that you guys get. Mr. Bonner?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. Parks Rep has one item on the agenda tonight, item number three. That's to grant use of the city park and surrounding streets for preparation and operation of the toilet in Sutter River Valley from 5/9/14 through 5/12/14. This is an annual event. We've always granted use for. We'll let it go to three reads, and if anyone has any specific questions, I think this is all spelled out really well, and something we always are lucky to have. I will also report on item seven tonight, as that is a carryover from the old city services that I was the chair of when that was originally assigned. Thanks, Teresa Wood, Law Director, for getting this on the agenda. This is the men, the sections dealing with taxicabs throughout our city and the regulations of such. Thanks, thanking the Mayor Everson for pointing this out. This is something that was long overdue. Some of the language hadn't been up there since the fifties, and then even some of the words.
Didn't know we had taxicabs.
So, obviously, a lot of people had a chance to look at that, but he's the one that realized, hey, let's do this. And also, just really give credit to the people who wrote that original language. They did a very good job. Very minimal changes. They had good vision, good foresight, but we didn't make a whole lot of changes. Everyone can look at that. It'll go to three reads. The fee, going back to fifty, was $25. We talked about how much to raise the fee for the license. Ended up at $75. The big jumps came from the insurance areas where they went from $10,000 to $100,000 for everyone involved in the taxi cab, and $5,000 to $50,000 for each individual liability. But that was the big jump. Cleaned up a little bit of language up, and I think it turned out good. And I said, if anyone has any questions, please let me know, and we'll let this go to three reads. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Bonner. Any other? Ms. Neal?
Community Affairs has one item. I'm reporting on this. Just a brought-forward item. It's a third reading to provide for an agreement with the Ross County Commissioners whereby the city continues to be eligible for state reimbursement of costs incurred in appointing counsel for indigent defendants in criminal cases. There's not much more to that. That's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Neal. Any other reports of committees?
Mr. President, I fail to report that I'd like to waive the three-read rule on that item, too, because I know the auditor wants this taken care of. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any other reports of committees? Reports of officials. Mayor Everson?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. First of all, I indicated on the press release today, we'd like to welcome Dave Tanner to the city as our new Parks and Rec Director. Dave brings lengthy experience and fairly comprehensive networking with the recreational activities all across the state of Ohio and the neighboring states as well, which could help us with expanding our recreational program with the city. So, welcome Dave to the floor. On Wednesday, I'll be attending a meeting out at the Adena with Commissioner representatives and school system representatives to talk about Adena care and what that is. It's just the preliminary discussions on lowering the cost by forming a co-op, so to speak, with public entities to reduce the cost of health care at the source. This isn't an insurance modification or anything else. It's a group with some economy of scale negotiating special rates for hospital. In its infancy, this is just the first reading of several come, but it's a topic that Mark Schuhr and I have been talking about for quite some time, and we're kicking that into action, trying to lower insurance costs. Today, I got a letter from Judith Davis. She's a resident of the Fifth Ward, and it's to commend our newest councilman, Mr. Showman, who helped her out on January 6th where her water pipes froze and there was water going into her garage. Mr. Showman jumped right into action, six days on the job, and contacted the Water Department and followed up on her. Got the problem resolved, got the mess cleaned up. Mrs. Patrick jumped in there as well. So, I'd like to commend both of you for taking quick action and taking care of our citizens up in the Fifth Ward. I'll be signing a letter of endorsement for Ohio University of Chillicothe to lend my support for a grant that they're going to pursue in collaboration with Thicway Ross to renovate a emergency response training center up there on the hill. Notice the northernmost part of the facility along Pullman Road where it ends into the Old Water Street Hill. That's a training center that's been somewhat neglected over the years, and the city's got an interest in that as well. We're looking at doing PAT testing, which is physical agility training for firefighters and police officers as part of our civil service testing. That might be a way to generate some revenue through civil service to help pay some of those bills, and lending our support for a grant application on that will go pretty far towards doing that. And there's other people that are joining in on that, so I'll be submitting a support letter on that by tomorrow. Then finally, the Water Rate Review Committee met last Friday. This is to discuss the ordinance that automatically renews the 2% increase to the water and sewer bills for citizens. We got to the point in the conversation where we needed a better analysis on our costs in those two departments. I think it was fairly unanimous in the attendees that these water rate increases that automatically go into place need to be justified by costs that go up by that much, and maybe not in problems that the department's having in revenue generation. So, we're getting some more complete details on the actual cost increases for the utilities departments, and if that justifies that rate increase going in as is, or if we need to modify that ordinance to change the amounts or negate the whole increase altogether. We'll be getting back together on February 7th, a week from this Friday, at 2:00 in my conference room to discuss that. And that is my report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Everson. Attorney Feeney?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. First item I'd like to touch on is item two on the agenda, which is the brought-forward purchase order ordinance. This is a bit of a formality. Essentially, what it is, is money that was appropriated by council in 2013. For fairly specific items, you'll see, in many cases, bigger numbers because by and large, we're talking about capital expenditures that were approved but not spent last year. I think we had some sewer drainage, that kind of thing. So, what happens is towards the end of the year, the departments review what they've spent, and on some items are permitted to request that these purchase orders be carried forward into the following fiscal year. We review these carefully. Not all are allowed, but we, the ones that are recommended or brought in front of you tonight. Last year, this ordinance was passed with the budget. It doesn't have to happen that way, but as some of these are vendors who are engaged with the city, I would also request a waiver of the three-read rule tonight. The second item, which Councilman Trutzel also touched on, is his request to the Law Director for purchase of garbage trucks. We touched on that really at the last meeting, and the plan is that that legislation would actually be combined with the note legislation, and our bond council actually drafts that legislation. And so, the Law Director contacted me, and I just let her know that the bond council could take care of both of those items. So, at the next council meeting, we should have legislation that would include both the note payment, which we're only doing an interest payment this year, for the Adena water note, and then it would have the additional cost of those two garbage trucks. If anybody has any questions on that, feel free to contact me. But that should be ready, as Councilman Trutzel mentioned, at our next meeting. Next, I'm going to request of Councilman Trutzel a brief Finance Committee meeting to review the purchase of software for the Auditor's Office. Just a bit of history for those who might not have been here. The money was originally appropriated, I believe in 2012, for the purchase of software in 2013 for the Auditor's Office. We have a couple options, namely, a difference between hosting the hardware ourselves and thus being responsible for the maintenance ourselves, or moving to a more, for lack of a better word, it's cloud-based computing. And the big difference between the two is upfront cost versus extended cost over time. And I just, because I wasn't a part of the original appropriation ordinance, I'd just like the opportunity to discuss with council, get the feeling on commitment there before we move forward. We have an opportunity with our current provider, I believe, to actually modify the current contract, continue with the same company, and not go after RFP, or we can just go the full route. So, that's just something that I'll be asking for a meeting on. It shouldn't take long, but I just want to flesh out the options there. Finally, we were able to close the year at the end of last week. With the passage, hopefully, of this ordinance tonight, I'll be able to have my, I guess, year-end review report at our next council meeting, which I'm sure you're all eagerly anticipating. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Feeney. From the chair, just a couple of items. First off, I would like to agree with the mayor and welcome our new Parks and Rec Director, Dave Tanner. I think last year was a pretty rough year for the Parks and Rec Department and council approving, putting that position back in the budget and getting that position funded. You know, we've got bigger and better things to look forward to this year with the Parks and Rec, and I want to welcome Dave. I think he'll, good choice, Mayor Everson, I think he'll do a wonderful job. But also want to thank all of our crews again. Man, this weather has just been killing them. They, again, hitting on the weekend. I got up to, you know, did a bit of math Sunday morning and could get off my, I mean, it was, they just did a good job again, Jack, so please convey that forward. I know those guys are just busting their tails, and it just seems like the weather's never-ending on them, but they just keep putting boots back on and getting in the trucks and going, so.
It's on the weekend, Ben.
Yeah, absolutely. So, the side streets are what they are, but I mean, the bit, you know, getting those main streets paved, so the emergency crews and the flow of traffic and those kind of things can happen. Again, I know they've just been busting their tails and wanted to show my appreciation of that as well. And even a lighter note, want to give a congratulations to one of our Chillicothe High School graduates, Mr. Chip Bell, who apparently he's still on Jeopardy tonight, but I just thought I would throw that out. Anybody that knows, have been in politics for a while around here, remember Ms. Nancy Bell, our old director of the Board of Elections. Chip is Nancy's son, and apparently has won two nights in a row at the end of last week on Jeopardy, and he's born and raised right here, Chillicothe High School graduate, so another little cap in the star of somebody from our community that is doing good things and, you know, making our community proud, I guess you could say. Also want to remind the community that this week is the kickoff, today was kickoff of Catholic Schools Week, so anybody, just a reminder that there is a parochial school up on the hill, and it's, they're having functions all week long, so if anybody's interested in checking that out, please contact the school. And last but not least on that, I want to congratulate the youth group from St. Peters again. Father Han and Deacon Hauser took youth to, over to the March for Life, and they, whether you believe what they believe or not, they did represent our community with grace and dignity, and they went to do what the founding fathers envisioned citizens could do at a very young age. They went over and regressed their government of things that they disagree with that's happening, and they represented our community quite well, so I wanted to congratulate the youth from that group. And again, you talk about probably not the ideal time, it wasn't like they went to Florida. And they went to DC, and it was pretty cold and miserable over there, too, so they, it wasn't like they got a great vacation out of it, you know. They actually went over and did work, so I wanted to congratulate Father Han and the youth for going over there and taking their constitutional rights and taking to the streets, as they say. So, that's all I have from the chair. Next up's audience participation. Anybody wish to address council, please step up to the, actually, we've still got a microphone now. Step up to the microphone. Please sign in, state your name and address for the clerk, and council rules limit to, subjects to fifteen minutes, and the speakers to five, so. Anybody wishes to address council? The floor is yours. Okay, going once, going twice. Must be cold, everybody's wanting to move on. All right, very good. We'll go to old business next. Any council members have any old business they would like to bring up? Ms. Patrick?
I just had one question from the mayor. I've been receiving still a lot of phone calls about the truck wrath signage in the East End.
I'll check on that. I'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Ms. Trutzel?
And I'd like to piggyback on what you said about the snowy local crews. What a fantastic job, and it's really impressive when you're out in Washington, and you see them coming five breaths down the street, pushing snow off the street. That's impressive.
It is, absolutely.
They did a heck of a job out there. Well, most of the hills on the West End, and, you know, I realize that a lot of side streets get omitted, but you can't hit them all. We hit over a hundred miles of streets in this town and it's getting over them all. They did a heck of a job.
I agree, Tom. Thank you. Any other old business? additions and correspondence, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, the only thing I have is the, this was included in the council packets, and it is a reminder of the obligation to file the 2013 financial disclosure statement in 2014. The deadline is April 15th of 2014. You can file online, and just for the record, I have asked the mayor's secretary to send out a copy of this to David Neal and Gene Malone as well. And anyone who ran for office last year, held office last year, was elected last year, I think you have to check, see what your responsibilities are on that. If you fail to get it filed, you will be fined. It can be up to $250. And although in the past, I've been able to help people with exemptions on that, where I personally neglected or through oversight did not get them notice of that, this is a matter of record now. You've all been notified, and I would not be able to help anyone if you overlook this responsibility, so. Just a word to the wise, and that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, John. Yeah, and with that, if anybody did, the filing online is so much easier now than it used to be, making copies of that stuff, mailing it, getting it stamped, make sure it gets there. So, I had the pleasure of doing one of those last year, coming back into this, and the online experience for me was much better than the days when I was on council before and had to do them on paper, so it is pretty painless doing it online, and they'll take your debit card right there, just like anything else, too, so you can take care of all of it, so. Okay, any new business, council members? Mrs. Ames?
Thank you, President Reinhardt. One of the positions that I hold for city councils, a member of the board of the Ross-Chillicothe Convention and Visitors Bureau. We had our meeting today with our rapport of the annual report, and I'd like to report on that. Hopefully, all council members received in the mail a copy of the annual report from Melody Young, the director. The report includes highlights on attractions, festivals, and visitors, as the new director, Melody, is expanding the scope of the bureau and trying new approaches to marketing and advertising of our city and county. One successful new approach was to create welcome packets for hunters who travel to Ross County. Nine hundred and ten packets were distributed, so that's quite a few hunters, and they said that there were many more that they're going to try to reach out to next year. Another thing, Swap Days has moved from Sayota County to Ross County this year, and this is going to have a huge impact on the number of visitors here. I didn't realize how big this was, but there are hundreds of these devoted swappers who come from as far away as North Carolina and Virginia, and the hotels are already filling up for this weekend. They want to go to the local attractions, so Melody and her staff are preparing updated packets to hand out. The first Swap Days weekend is April 11th through 13, and then there's also going to be one in June and one in October. Additionally, Ross County is now going to be part of a very popular statewide bar quilt tour, and what this is, is they have wooden painted quilt squares that are on buildings such as farms, and people are given maps to discover these squares, and it's kind of like a scavenger hunt almost type of thing. Melody said that there's going to be a quilt square put on front of the convention and Visitors Bureau, and the deadline to be a part of this tour and display a quilt square is February 1st, and currently they have 51 applications, so there's a great interest in this. Finally, she also has instituted the ambassador program, and she and Assistant Sue Kitchen will be going to local businesses to help make employees aware of how they can provide visitors with a positive experience while here, and provide them with better information and directions to local attractions. And this is one of the objectives of the Downtown Development Commission, that they wanted to make people in service professions, especially in Chillicothe, better able to handle questions from visitors and know where to direct people. Melody had had two training sessions scheduled for Saturday, but she had rescheduled those because of the bad weather. And then also, this kind of touches on what the mayor said about the Local Emergency Planning Committee. I attended that meeting today, and at the meeting, the new Associate Dean of OUC, Dr. Brenda Phillips, made a presentation on the grant that she's going to submit to the Ohio Board of Regents, and this is to reinvigorate and rebuild the Emergency Response Training Center at OUC, and that it will be used by community-based industry, fire, hazmat, and safety personnel. And one of the components of this grant, it has to have an educational partner, so that's why Ross County Career and Technology Center is there. And this site is seven acres off of Pullman, and there are many different types of training that go there. Some of them have been neglected and deteriorated or need to be totally rebuilt. Others can be revamped, but this would provide local training for businesses and city employees such as fire department, which would make our cost more efficient, benefit local businesses, and keep city and local business dollars here in the community. A component of this training will be training for neutralizing and remediating meth labs with most current up-to-date methods. At the meeting, I offered Dean Phillips a letter of support for this grant on behalf of the Special Meth Lab Committee, and she said that would be very helpful, the more letters and information and support from the community, the better. It's a $200,000 grant, and we, it would need $100,000 matching, however, matching can be things like hours of teaching from different groups, equipment support such as fire truck on loan from the fire department, different things like that that would add up to the $100,000. I'm going to ask the Meth Lab Committee if it is all right with them that I write a letter to Dean Phillips in support of this, because they're going to provide training that will go along with this ordinance that we have worked so long and hard on. So, if that's all right with the Meth Lab people, can you write a letter?
From the chair. Absolutely, Ms. Ma.
Well, Pat, Mrs. Patrick was going to do it, but she's having computer problems, and she can't get it done, and the deadline's Friday. So, I will have her sign off on it and try to get the other committee members to. Yes, that was my original intent, but didn't work out.
Thanks for doing that, too.
You're welcome. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Feeney. Any other new business? Ms. Trutzel?
I have a request that we keep the temperature in this building at a reasonable temperature. First of all, not only for members of city council, but for the audience, and also from the fact that if it the fact that if our water lines break or something in this building, it's going to cost us a whole lot more than what it's going to cost us in the bills. So I think it's only right that City Council meets it in a normal 70-degree temperature instead of whatever this is, my walk-in pool or something. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Trutzel. Any other new business? Going once, going twice? All right. Committee assignments and meeting dates. You guys got my email that I sent out last evening and the committee assignments that I sent out since our last legislative meeting? 14-23 was the Finance Committee, a request for legislation to finance and purchase two garbage trucks in 2014. 14-24 was the reissuance of the Special Meth Lab Committee and the work that they're doing, and apparently they're about wrapping up, so that, probably finish that one out soon. 14-25 to the Development Committee, a request for legislation accepting and supporting the Citizens Participation Plan for the CDBG Home Investment Partnership. 14-26 is the Engineering Committee to work with the Engineering Department to develop a plan for the city streets to include annual maintenance and paving requirements. 14-27 to the Finance Committee to develop a financing plan for the maintenance of the city streets. 14-28 to the Safety Services Committee, a request for legislation authorizing the CPD to trade in four civilian vehicles to obtain a vehicle to be used in undercover work. 14-29 to the Safety Services Committee, a request for legislation to accept the David Mead Massey Trust Grant awarded to the Chillicothe Fire Department in the amount of $2,640. 14-30 to the Safety Services Committee, a request for legislation to accept the reimbursement check in the amount of $1,161.31 from Sherman Williams for hazardous material containment during their fire. 14-31 to the Safety Services Committee, a request for legislation to accept a check in the amount of $100 from a Ms. Kelly Piner, and the check that she gave the city in appreciation of services she received from the Chillicothe Fire Department. 14-32 to the Finance Committee, a request for legislation to appropriate $25,000 into the flood wall capital lands and buildings line item. The funds were inadvertently omitted from the 2014 budget. And 14-33 to the Human Resources Committee, a request for legislation adding the position of Transportation Coordinator and amending ordinance 80-12 to include this position with pay parallel to the mayor's secretary's base gap. And that wraps that up. Next, legislation. Mr. Clerk?
Item number one. Third reading of an ordinance providing for an agreement between the City of Chillicothe, Ohio and the Ross County Commissioners, whereby the City of Chillicothe, Ohio will continue to be eligible for state reimbursement of costs incurred in appointing council for indigent criminal defendants and declaring an emergency. Third reading.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call on the ordinance.
Trutzel? Yes. Tatman? Yes. Showman? Yes. Pro? Yes. Patrick? Yes. Neal? Yes. Gray? Yes. Bonner? Yes. Ames? Yes.
Okay, that motion is adopted, and the ordinance is law. Item number two.
First reading of an ordinance appropriating $352,574.97 for the purpose of continuing the handling of brought-forward purchase orders from the year 2013 to be put on the books of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, to be spent during the year ending December 31, 2014, and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Mr. Trutzel?
For a recent stated in my report, I'd like to make a motion to waive the three-read rule.
As second to suspend the rules by Mrs. Ames? Roll call on the motion to suspend the three-read rule?
Trutzel? Yes. Tatman? Yes. Showman? Yes. Pro? Yes. Patrick? Yes. Neal? Yes. Gray? Yes. Bonner? Yes. Ames? Yes.
Okay, that motion is adopted, the ordinance is passed. Item number three.
First reading of a resolution granting use of the city park and surrounding streets from Friday, May 9, 2014, at 12:00 p.m. through Monday, May 12, 2014, at 12:00 p.m., for preparation and operation of the tour of the Sayota River Valley and providing for coordination of its events with the Parks and Recreation Department. First reading.
Any further discussion? Item number four.
First reading of an ordinance creating Chapter 1168 of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, establishing the Chillicothe Downtown Development Commission for the City of Chillicothe, Ohio, and to charge the CDDC with recommending to the Council of the City of Chillicothe a program for development for the Historic Design Review District and such zoning code updates and other updates to the ordinances of the City of Chillicothe as the CDDC may find appropriate to provide for the orderly development and enhancement of the Historic Design Review District hereafter the Downtown District. First reading.
Say that again, John. Further discussion? Item number five.
First reading of an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Chillicothe, Ohio to enter into a contract with the Walter H. Drain Company and declaring an emergency. First reading.
Mrs. Ames? I moved away with the three-read rule.
As seconded by Mr. Trutzel? Roll call to suspend the three-read rule?
Trutzel? Yes. Tatman? Yes. Showman? Yes. Pro? Yes. Patrick? Yes. Neal? Yes. Gray? Yes. Bonner? Yes. Ames? Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. Roll call on the ordinance.
Trutzel? Yes. Tatman? Yes. Showman? Yes. Pro? Yes. Patrick? Yes. Neal? Yes. Gray? Yes. Bonner? Yes. Ames? Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. Roll call on the ordinance.
Trutzel? Yes. Tatman? Yes. Showman? Yes. Pro? Yes. Patrick? Yes. Neal? Yes. Gray? Yes. Bonner? Yes. Ames? Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. Roll call on the ordinance.
Trutzel? Yes. Tatman? Yes. Showman? Yes. Pro? Yes. Patrick? Yes. Neal? Yes. Gray? Yes. Bonner? Yes. Ames? Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. Roll call on the ordinance.
Trutzel? Yes. Tatman? Yes. Showman? Yes. Pro? Yes. Patrick? Yes. Neal? Yes. Gray? Yes. Bonner? Yes. Ames? Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. Roll call on the ordinance.
Trutzel? Yes. Tatman? Yes. Showman? Yes. Pro? Yes. Patrick? Yes. Neal? Yes. Gray? Yes. Bonner? Yes. Ames? Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended. Roll call on the ordinance.
Trutzel? Yes. Tatman? Yes. Showman? Yes. Pro? Yes. Patrick? Yes. Neal? Yes. Gray? Yes. Bonner? Yes. Ames? Yes.